I have to look at it.
Okay, your afternoon there.
No, we don't.
For all this study session. Or two. We are recording. We are recording. Hysterics. But I've been told higher up. Proof positive. Okay. Um, can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Thank you very much. In favor?
Hi.
He is.
And here.
Yeah, I don't know if he's better. Say for. Um, Ms. Marcus, are you there?
There are audio.
I can call her.
I I'm here. I just have the mute on and the video off.
Okay, um, for child, do you approve the agenda?
Yes, I do. Yes.
Okay, any public comment? Very much. Let's jump right into our study session. Am I turning over to Will?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, everyone. Thank you for having us here. We're all been excited to do the second part of our study session for uh. Ultimately, building C and then our future construction projects. Um, what I can do is um, as we go through, we started talking, you guys need to introduce yourselves. And now we'll get started. Uh, so this is just another overall view of the high school campus. Uh, we kind of already went through the buildings and all the different areas. And. Uh, this has a refresher and this was uh, our review of uh, B three, B four of the floor plans there. And soon as it. Advances. We'll see eventually um. The existing Conheim building, which Mr. Tim Ellis will help us describe what's on each floor. If it wants to move forward, there we go. This was another rendering of the theater and that here's our first and second floor plans. And do you want to uh, take it from here?
Sure. Um. On the first floor, you enter in here. These are all offices. This is the team room. That uh, B triple A had refurbished for us before I got here. Oops, sorry. You heard that? Um.
Just tap anywhere.
Exit.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's okay.
Um. Coach's offices in here. Equipment storage here. This is the rehab room, training room. Uh, this is storage for football uniforms and equipment. This is a boys bathroom. Uh, boys locker room. Storage. Kenny's little office area there bathrooms. And that side, girls locker room over here. Uh. Storage. Girls locker room offices over here for the uh, women's coaches on the first floor. Second floor, um, seven oh one wrestling room. This is an official's room that we have for during football games and basketball games officials go there. Two classrooms up here. Uh, this should be seven oh three and this is the basketball office seven oh five. Football office at seven oh six. Of the east and west gyms. Uh, dance room. Here. And this is the classroom that we use for fitness. And. That was a cheer room, but the chairman moved back down under the Conheim. So it's kind of an exercise uh, dance room. Of. Classroom. I have to send the comment.
What offices are down there?
Here? Here, here.
Yeah, if that's the women coaches, then. Who's over there?
Well, the women actually over here is, this is Laura's office in six thirteen. Uh, this is um, my office, kind of a storage area. This is the copy room. Bathroom. Baseball coach, uh, Ahmad's room. Bonzi's room, Brattle's room.
Miss John, sorry, can I just ask, discuss for the press watching? When you're referring to people, can you say what their title or their position is? So like Von D or Laura, those types of people?
Uh.
I ask the favor, wait, can I ask a favor? Could you please? Tell me the numbers of the rooms, because I cannot see where you're pointing on my screen. So if you could give me the numbers at the same time.
Got it.
Appreciate that.
Okay, six thirteen Laura Mendoza Athletic Secretary. Six eleven. Uh. Tim Ellis. Six oh three is a copy room. Six oh one is the men's locker room shower. Six hundred. Tom Roberts, baseball coach. Six oh two is Ahmad Hasini, uh, aquatics coach. Six oh four Vonzy Pasinger, athletic director, boys. Six oh six, John Brattle, athletic director, girls. Six oh eight, Brian Frank soccer coach. Uh, six nineteen or six ten, there is not really a room, it's just a storage area. And where the um, computer hardware is all located.
And then the other.
The other side. Um, the only one that's really occupied right now is six fifty three. That is um, Dana Finley, dance teachers. Six fifty five is a storage room for Dana Finley and the dance. Six fifty eight is the girls' um, locker room bathroom area. Six fifty, six fifty two, six fifty four, six fifty six are basements. Okay. Good.
So when. B four opens Dana Finley and basically that whole area will move to B four.
Yes, so actually they'll move to building C.
She Dana Finley is not going to be in building B four.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
And the dancer.
Same with the.
That whole area would be.
Yes.
Do you really be locating and to be? Those offices there. The locker rooms and then. Those gyms.
Are what? Yeah, the gyms, yeah, the weight room, locker rooms.
Two gyms and the.
Wrestling.
The wrestling room.
And then the two classrooms up there.
The two classrooms there. This is a backseat, seven oh five is the basketball office for basketball coach Jarvis Turner.
And then we do have coaches like golf coach. Tennis coach. Boy's soccer coach with, which are unhoused.
Yeah, well, we kind of use this room six hundred and two here, this office here. That's kind of the catch all coaches office, six oh two and six hundred. Tom Roberts, baseball coach stores a lot of his stuff in six hundred. Um, six eleven, my other office is kind of used as a storage room for the golf clubs. And stuff when they are not using tennis balls, all that kind of stuff stores in there.
What? What is seven oh seven and seven fifty? Nine?
Those are the east and west gym, seven oh seven is the east gym, seven fifty nine is the west gym.
Is seven oh one the way, which is the dance studio?
Seven oh, uh, seven oh one is the wrestling room. Seven fifty six and seven fifty four are the dance studio.
Thank you.
And the one below is Dana Finley's office, right?
Down here.
Oh, then what's the third one?
This one is a um, that was the cheer room when the Conheim was under construction or the team gym was going through its rehab. And now it's a, it's a fitness room that we use has um, biometric boxes, some spin bikes in there and a couple elliptical machines.
So you have equipment there and then you also have it on the first floor and that.
You know, it's, yeah, yeah, well, we have equipment down in the weight room.
Six fifty nine is a locker room? Six fifty nine?
Yeah.
Yes. Locker room, that's a girl, part of the girls locker room.
And the boys locker room?
Six seventeen and six twenty one. Six seventeen is the team room, so when teams like the football team or the wrestling team or the basketball team, that's the room that they use during their seasons.
Can we see building C's floor plan?
Yeah, that's what we're going through next. Yeah, give us back.
Do we have anything there for visiting teams when they come? So I have a place where they go, or do they always stay up? Be outside, what's the situation?
Uh, depending on the sport, in football season. The visiting team will um, come into the girls locker room. In that area and in basketball season, the visiting team will hang out in the boys locker room six twenty one.
Okay. For now, we're gonna move on to building C, it's a nice segue to that. And um. We said, there we go. And Tim, you want to take this from here? You can, you can stay there if you want, unless you, I just want to point to it. Different, just watch operation. You're your better. Oh, go ahead. I know, but you didn't always block them down.
Let's hand it.
And then with the L R group. I've got my associate check here as well.
Hi.
Um, okay, so I'm going to start with the basement or we can bottom up. Uh, so on this side over here, on the right side of the screen is going to be Moreno at the top. Sorry for the captions up here. That's the drive aisle that goes down into the basement. It's the drive aisle up here, going down. And uh, these are. One, one single story of parking, we have a hundred and seventeen parking slots, seven are prepped for EV charging. Uh, they're not uh, part of our scope was to just prep it, but the actual treading equipment, it's not part of scope, so that can come in afterwards. Um, and then along with the. Uh, some of the program in the basement, there's some electrical rooms and also uh, the pool equipment. As in the pumps.
Is there spots designated for electric cars?
Yes, we have seven spots currently dedicated for EV cars. Um, Tim, you talk about the future pool? Yes, okay.
Well, they do soil testing for the.
A lot of it often.
And and how, how long does that take? Like, how extensive is that?
We already have them actually.
Oh.
Since twenty fourteen, uh. Then twenty seventeen, then twenty twenty. So we have all of those.
Okay, there's no concern about arsenic or radon or any?
Oh, yes, I mean, that's a different topic though. We're talking about the technical, geotechnical aspect of it, but in terms of.
There is also a DTS report, there are some contaminated soil that we have to deal with that, so that report also is in place. But the plan has not been approved by DTSC, it just submitted the plan for this area of the site to DTSC.
Unlike the fields, though, where you have to replace the soil, here you're taking the soil out. So it just depends on what's left where and then they'll tell us when. So geotechnically, it's currently designed, we have it, you know, the reports, we've designed it based on those reports, so we're okay based on the design, it's geotechnical, as you mentioned, the, the. Payment soil portion is. Working our way up to the first floors, again Moreno is on the right side of the screen. Coming in from the lobby, that's in, it's in green color, uh, flanking both sides, we have a concession stand at the top and a ticket booth on the bottom. And then as you proceed inwards, that big yellow. Portion there, that's our triple gym, three full size basketball courts, includes volleyball, Bammington as well.
Um, I'm sorry, can I, the button structure you then mentioned that there are some utility.
Yeah, I mentioned the electrical room, the pool room.
Can you situate us in terms of um, the streets?
Yeah, Moreno is on the right side of.
Thank you.
Yeah. So uh. After, afterwards, we can kind of go, go back to the site plan. Um, so on the yellow, the. The top court, the bottom court, we choose to pull out, we currently have enough space for around seventeen hundred visitors, seventeen fifty. And then working our way further inwards, there's a corridor that separates some of the supporting spaces. Uh. I guess I'll start at the top. Well, the pink, that's our rehab clinic. Or uh. Yeah, treatment and whatnot.
Yeah, training room.
Training room, thank you. Uh, you'll have an office exam room. And then the dark gray color next to that, we have some of the supporting storage spaces. And uh, in the middle, that's your boys locker room, we, with three team rooms. Uh, for visiting teams, home teams, where else can we need? Uh, total is uh, around, I think, nine hundred and twenty lockers. And uh, the, I guess the purple color there, that's your, your PE offices, open PE office and. So locker shower as well. And then moving down, I'll go to the, I guess maroon color there, that's the weight room. And that. Will actually open up onto the uh, the uh, I guess we'll call it the athletic plaza. So that's the grand staircase going down a little bit further. That goes up. From the athletic plaza up to B one. I think now would probably be a good time to go back to the site plan and see, we can go and see what's going on. Oh, I forgot that this is a little bit, a little bit clunky. All right, there we go. All right, so I'm just going to situate there, so um. You can see orienting again from Moreno. Going through the three doors, that would be the lobby. And then the athletic plaza that I was mentioning is between the swim gym and building C. And it's kind of a triangular in, in the way that, you know. Uh, building C, swim gym, and then the pool on front and the grand stair, it's like, that'll take you up to B one.
You still want to step on?
Yeah.
Are you able to expand this a little bit?
Yeah.
Please.
It's the muscle. Can you use, I don't take. Picture there, Tim, on, on Zoom?
Sure. But I don't know if we need, well, as, as.
Or if you have for somebody on Zoom, so you know, but I, I, I don't know.
Sure.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to go to the second.
Sure.
So second floor, um. Doesn't, doesn't want you to go to the right spot. There we go. Okay. So orienting ourselves again to the bottom left corner, that's the staircase that takes you up. As you walk up that staircase, um. That's how you enter into the, enter into the corridor. Beating all of the uh, second floor support station, so the maroon color at the bottom, that's a fitness center. That will overlook. The uh, athletic plaza, so the weight room below, it's going to be a lot of free weights, the fitness center will be more machines. Um, I think the idea at the time was if this was open for GPA, the pool, the fitness center, that was an opportunity. Um, and then the green color, that's your girls locker. Again, we have, I think, three team rooms in there and we have seven hundred and seventy lockers for girls. And uh, PE offices as well and uh, the last color up there, the maroon in the top is the wrestling.
How many offices do you have for key offices?
It's an open station. It, so it'd be open desks and we have enough for probably about four to six. What's it for?
On each floor?
On each floor.
Um, do you have like a ballpark estimate of how many square feet minus uh, the parking? Building C as compared to Conheim? So we can like visualize, it seems like C is going to be much more grand. I'm just curious to know, is it thirty percent bigger? Like, what's the?
I have to, the, the Con, the Conheim building is about thirty four thousand square feet, of course. Uh, this building offers us a few, about twenty thousand more, so that's fifty four. That's including the basement or the?
Excluding.
Excluding. The yellow, that's, that's the. Fourth, the gym, it's the open space, the open space in the top of the gym.
But that's excluded as well, so only there's the usable space. And, and ground force, maybe.
And then, so am I understanding that it's? The. The first floor is three basketball courts?
Yeah.
And then these are three additional basketball?
Oh, it's single stories. Can you go to the next slide? We have a rendering.
Got it. Okay. It's a nice feeling.
Go on, it's a high C.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And then are the um, are the stands retractable?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
So if you're, when I have three courts, you put, we just, you know, we track them all the way back and then it's a main event, boom, now.
Okay, and could you do half and half, like partial retraction?
You can bring one side out, leave it out, maybe the other side.
God, thank you. And there's no elevator?
Yes, uh, we have currently two elevators, one goes in the rendering. Oh, yeah, so.
Thank you.
Can I ask, in the renderings on the second floor, I know you, you're basketball. But what about other sports that can be put up there that's like as volleyball or uh, things that the kids might want, the teachers might want to be able to use indoors? Volleyball courts, um, maybe even uh, badminton courts, uh, other kinds of courts that could be used indoors in the area?
Yeah, we have striping plans and also the, the prep for the equipment of the sleeves for volleyball nets and Bammington nets, so it's, it's intended for all three. Basketball, volleyball, Bammington.
And then can you confirm that all of our current sports now would have? Usage. To their, to meet their needs for the industry future, like whatever your current needs are will continue to met?
This will exceed our current, yeah, because we now have a campus baseball facility. Um, an on-campus softball facility. Uh, three basketball courts as opposed to two and one. The extra swimming pool. Um, weight room, wrestling room. Uh, fitness room, so it's going to exceed.
But how about if you just compare Conheim to the proposed C? That would.
Oh, yeah, we, well, we, we get the, yeah, we get the third basketball court. The basketball courts upstairs in the Conheim are not good for volleyball because the season, the seat, the ceiling is so low. For that, we'll be able to play volleyball on those three basketball courts there.
Okay.
So that helps us out that way. We have a bigger wrestling room, we have a weight room contained within the gym, or now the weight room is a small room underneath the Conheim, or underneath this one gym.
More seating.
More seating.
And more seating. And the dance room is not, that's in Conheim is now.
So what will happen with the weight room at the swim?
At the swim gym? I'm not sure what we'll do with that just yet, but it's.
That equipment is moved?
That equipment, yeah, we bought that, when I bought that equipment two years ago, that was with the intention of being able to be transported up. To the new weight room.
So.
And, and added on.
In addition to the weight room and the swim gym, what other space will open up in the swim gym? Once this is finished?
Uh, the cheer room. Will, will open up, those two areas will open up down there. Obviously, and I'm not sure what the plans look like for how that tunnel area. That goes into the Conheim is going to, how they're going to transition that off because the Conheim will be gone, so that's the only, those two areas will open up and turn to the swim gym and that's it.
So where is the wrestling room in this plan?
Second floor.
Second floor, and what about the visiting locker rooms? That's something about a third locker room? We have three. Team rooms as incorporated within each locker room, so.
Man.
So it's not a second locker room, which is a team room within the locker.
Correct.
Yeah. And, and is the um, cheer at the same, second floor too? We don't have a dedicated cheer room. The only rooms that we have are wrestling room and. Can't move it unless we have.
Yeah.
The, the cheer room could stay in the.
Yes.
Well, cheerleader could possibly go into the. Well, let me ask you, the, the plans for this particular building are already approved and through the uh, DSA, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. So the question that we have that we kind of left off on is can we um, look at the possibility of eliminating the basement floor? And it's a timing to redesign. And go through that process. And how much would be saved in cost by not building the basement?
We'll be on the. Yeah, we can move on to that now and then. Yeah, go ahead.
We are still investigating all of that as far as how much saving. We have some bunch of ideas. Like, I think like ten to fifteen million, but there are some challenges regarding to the soil that we still need to look into that to make sure it's feasible or not. We also need to go, go through the redesign and that would add to the time, the front of the time for the project. Because it is input to DSA, I know DLR is working with DSA to see if it's possible to submit this as an addendum. That would save some time, but we still are not sure if it's doable or not. I don't know, Tim, if you have any more clear understanding on that, that on the. So they are still communicating that with DSA, if it goes through a full new design, obviously it's going to be a lot more time, it means that they need to submit a new application. Go through the whole process of review, if it's an addendum, it's a lighter version of review and it's going to save time sometime. So these are all the things that we are working on. I think in very near future, we can come back with more information, more like educated numbers and everything, but we are as a team all working. For that goal to give you an answer that it's feasible and yes, if it's feasible, how much would be the cost saved?
And looking at time savings if, or time impacted at all. In total.
Yes.
Yeah.
And looking at its feasibility, or how are you addressing parking? If you remove parking, you're, because we're removing the outdoor lot to do this project. So where are we going to provide parking?
Right, so I think other question I have, can we assess the parking that we have in building A? Because we, it's never stolen in building A when I am shared, so do we need? I mean, can we make do with the parking that's in building A? Is the question, because if you can save fifteen million dollars, the reality of it is, since we don't have a budget finish. So. Uh, if we can survive well with having parking in building A. Then, and we can save the money not doing the basement and there is not a time impact. That could be a great solution for us to finish schools.
The savings aren't enough and delay the project too much. You look at cost escalation, obviously, the materials we've experienced already. You also run into a problem with that, you're going to max out the high school parking pretty quickly. When this construction is done, if we attract more people to the high school, which we're expecting to do, we're not going to be able to park. So it's very.
I mean, I think you need to set the parking, get far less, even if you attract more people, and what's the breaking point? I think you have to do an assessment on the parking to see. It, do we really need more parking? And. And if the, the time to redesign, you're saving on time to build because you're not building the basement. Then I'm not sure from cost escalation standpoint, how much, if you have to look at all.
Ends up, how long DSA is taking that?
Right, and I think those are all the questions we're asking, and one of those questions should include an assessment on.
So, but I think Drew, are you asking about uh, the parking during the school day or after school when the? Athletics facility might be more than to the.
Both.
Okay, during, well, I can say during the school day, we're already pretty. Yes, sorry.
What parks there during the school day?
Students park in the lower lot and the staff park in the upper lot. And it's pretty close to max capacity, like you can, heard on the day when we had career day.
We have.
For example, we had to get creative and like asking pretty much all the students to park on the street, other than seniors, we had to come in at the time. We would park like in the village. On. Eat, or excuse me, on, yeah, eat, so. Um, during the school day, if we were anticipating bringing lots of. New cars in addition to, and I'm not speaking to the cost benefit of any of this, I'm just specifically parking as well on campus. We would run out of spots pretty quickly if we were going to be bringing in outside parkers to utilize, you know, maximize anything more with building C. I would think we'd run out of like, pretty quick.
We would be maximizing of building C during school days, per se, that would be.
Probably, most likely not, you know, there would be certain days like. Wrestling, you know, when we, if we host wrestling meets and. So what about, what about the village area? Because we're looking at possibly pulling everybody in on trailers. Pretty quickly, pretty soon. So is that an area that we utilize parking if we have to spill over and you, and we, if we did not put parking in C? And we needed to accommodate. You know, whatever that is. What are the plans for the village in the short term and long term?
That's a possibility that we were looking, we can add some like. Open space parking at us over there, this temporarily, if it's needed. And as a permanent plan, you, I think you are going to have enough room to build the tennis courts after in the future and again have some surface parking.
Yeah.
Because even in the rendering, we are seeing like a practice, like soccer field up there, I don't know if it's needed or not, if you open up that whole area. You are going to have some space to have some like surface parking.
So we need space for that.
That's all.
Now, I mean, it needs to go on this campus somewhere.
Or does it?
Also, but we, we don't have any other, I mean. We have. I mean, I guess my point is, is I understand that you might not have parking if you have some big event. But. A lot of schools don't have parking when you have a big event, it's about meeting our needs on a daily basis. And we have a budget issue, so how do we make, how do we complete a building and finish our high school? The, the money we have are the money that's within reach. If, if we have all the money in the world, go ahead and build that parking lot. But we don't, we don't have enough money to finish, so how do you finish? In the most efficient way where we can get a really great programming and really meet the needs of our students on the day to day basis, not in the off. Day once a year when we have career day. And we have visitors coming to park. I mean, we can find parking solutions for events, but, and as long as we have parking for our day to day and we have parking available on the weekends, we can park. In the neighborhood, they are getting started structure on the weekends. Then I think we should look at that as a possibility, if it works out from a timing issue and all the other factors, but. I, I think we should look at the parking and see if our game meets our needs now, and if we do have. Any recent students, how much parking do we really need to have? But you also have to remember, we have a budget issue. And that's what you have to work within and, and we have to include M and O there because we don't have a place for M and O. And that's what you have to work within and, and we have to include M and O there because we don't have a place for M and O. And moving M and O would cost money. Or moving M and O would cause a lease. Or something, it, it would just cost more money, so we need to find solutions. With what we have.
So. And what I was gonna add is. Add its capacity, add speed capacity, six hundred. Kids at the high school. That was still the parking.
Right.
Except for building L. Building L was a parking lot as well.
Right.
We had a lot of kids parking over there.
Have twenty-six hundred too.
No, we don't. Um, but it's a question that the mayor had asked us in our negotiations, maybe about how to see things in years. And to be prepared for that. I don't wanna. I, 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 there's a giant swath of land next to the parking, next to building A. Yeah, I think. We can carve out enough spaces to be able to subsidize what we lose. If we don't put the parking in T. The thing I don't, I don't wanna do is. We're investing dozens of millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars into our high school. And when it's all said and done. Whoops, we don't have parking.
Right.
I don't wanna do that, I don't wanna be.
It's like to really look at what the parking looks like, are we maximizing the use of that parking space? The parking is in A, it doesn't need to be reconfigured in some ways, it was truly maximizing it. And what's the capacity today and what, and what's the growth capacity? And we need to have some sort of analysis on that. I'm not gonna base it on. Like within the wild, when walking through, like so much walk through and really do an assessment on how many spots we really have. How many spots do we really need? And yes, you could add it to that area outside of building A, but you also have to figure out where you're gonna put M and O.
You don't, M and O is not taking up that whole lot, there's a lot of empty space.
And, and that may be fine, that's what I'm saying, if you can fit the tennis courts and M and O and some room for extra parking there, that would be ideal. And then I think we can meet the needs and.
That's, I agree.
And I think that's a really good way to go.
Although. I know there's other ideas for M and O that.
Other thing too, you need to be careful too, is when you eliminate a lot, you have no ADA park, there's no handicap anywhere. Except up in the main lot.
Another suggestion that was made is having a drop-off area in the, in front of the lawn. Maybe using part of that lower part of the lawn as a, a drop-off area. Right, but maybe it could cut into that lower part of the lawn and you could have it as a, a drop-off area.
If you don't have the drive-in. Anyway, that was called the drive-in.
The drop-off.
Have that anymore, then you can make that your drop-off.
Right, and then maybe there could be some parking there, like short-term parking, like five spots or something to that effect.
Yeah, cause that does take up real estate.
Right, so you could have a, a drive-through, a drop-off. Drive-through and some potential like short-term parking spots and you could. It could also from the security standpoint, could have guard gate there. Where people check in and then they can go up. And so it alleviates some of the congestion that happens over on the side.
Yeah.
I will say like from an AYSO, HBL perspective, I'm here sometimes four times on Saturdays and Sundays picking up and so on. The community families are using the open-air lot. I'm in and out and as are many people because the, the weight on this neighborhood is heavy. Um, it, it is what it is.
They could use the.
Yeah, and so it just would mean that operationally, we would have to figure out how do the families. Come in and not wander our school site and then come. But I will say another thing, I mean, this is what happens on the weekends is happening from eight AM to eight PM. Um, I don't, I didn't even realize how much the GPA usage is. Until, you know, my kids grew up and, and that doesn't, that's just the weekend, that doesn't. Count when I'm here Tuesdays and Thursdays at seven PM and nine PM and so on. So it's not, you know, I am one hundred percent here, hearing you, we have X dollars, we don't even have X dollars. Uh, we have to figure out where X dollars is coming from, so we don't really have a choice, but we do need a backup plan operationally.
I mean, I think we haven't looked at it with these eyes, and I think what I would ask is that you go back. Because we, we haven't designed the front lawn, you haven't designed the area where tennis courts are and that, and that field is. We know that, we know what the needs are. You would like to have some parking, but I don't know for certain what the needs are on the parking, and I'd like someone to look at the parking and truly accept it. Um, and, and with the eyes that we're trying to make it work. And that we have limited resources. I think this is a huge space and I can't imagine that we can't figure out a way to find some parking, find, you know, drop-off areas. Find, find space that's adequate for M and O, find the six tennis courts that you need. Or seven tennis courts that you need. And, and the, and you've already evaluated all the rest of the space, so you have more than enough space for the rest of the programming. And based on the conversations we had last time, there's a lot of empty office space. That's in, will be in uh, B three or B four. There is, there's a lot of empty space as well, so there's plenty of room to grow into. And I think that we're not being smart about really. Being efficient with the space that we have and that's not gonna require redesign because you haven't designed it yet, so. We should assess. Really, what are the needs? And how can we design it to make it work for us in a way that we can do it quickly and. Efficiently with the dollars we have to the extent that we can minimize whatever amount of loan that we're gonna need to finish, but. We don't have. The money, I, I, I say it repeatedly because we don't and there's unknowns and we wanna finish schools and it's really important for us to finish the school, this has to be our priority. Finish it. This has to be. I mean, Elrodale will be finished and we also have to look at Elrodale still and make sure that the field and everything there are really meeting the needs of what that programming should be. But ideally, we should have two elementary schools, a middle school and a high school that's meeting all of our needs. With the money that we have. We should figure that out, and I don't think that saying, oh, we're gonna move M and O to Hawthorne or we're gonna move this over to there. All of those things end up costing so much money, I remember how much money it costs just to move M and O from Elrodale over to the high school. It's money that we can use for programming, money that we can use for the benefit of the kids instead of being inefficient in moving things around. When we can kind, think it all the way through and find the space for it now.
Well, let's talk about M and O success, keep, keeps coming up.
Well, Mary's first time, one of those ideas, maybe Hawthorne being a possibility, but there's costs.
Yeah, the other thing is when theater department moves back into the theater. Um, they have that giant room in the tunnel. That will go back to M and O.
Yeah.
Uh, so the question is what other space can we turn to M and O? When those, like Mary was saying, there will be so much space in B three and four, can we create the space? To bring M and O back into the natural building, so we can get rid of all the traps. That's the question.
You're gonna have the, you're gonna have the tunnel, I mean, I said tunnel, the bridge, you're gonna have the offices for the bridge. I mean, there's a lot of space that's not being used and not being thought through, and I think that we need to. Part of the reason that I asked to have the study session is that I wanna have this conversation about. How much space, once all of these buildings are done and the programs move to the spaces that you're planning. What's all the, what are we doing with all this open space that's left and how do we use it efficiently so that we can? Make it work at the high school and. And attached to that are, and related to that is this district office, so we're talking about doing an RFP for a ground lease on the district office. And I still have not had an answer for where are we gonna move the district office and the programs that are here. And it seems to me that you could fit that at the high school, there's so much office space there. That there's no reason that we couldn't have the district office moved to the high school and we should plan for it because. That makes sense, that's space we have, operationally, we wouldn't be running. Like if you decide, oh, we're gonna move it to Hawthorne, then you're gonna have security there, you're gonna have utilities there, you have operational costs to keep that space running. We're, we're already paying for that at the high school, so to move the offices to the high school. Then we already have security there, we're already paying for.
We have early education. You're operating the building.
But we don't have that. So what's, but what we do have is we have this space that we're using and we should use it. And this is what we have.
I, I, I would.
Hawthorne is, would, it would require moving, it would require. I really like, we have to do it here.
I really like being the district edition with the kids. It doesn't feel right or sound right to me to have our admin be. Separate and away from the action and what's happening and the vibe. Um, and I think that there is a lot to be said for having our district on-site at the high school.
Also, you also close on having opportunity to grow.
That's not true because we do have. Like, we don't need.
What, what if you start taking over rooms at the high school and didn't need them?
The rooms, you have problem. And then you could plan to go with.
But you wanna move it twice.
You could if that was the plan down the road, but today, you're already building this, you're already gonna have those spaces. It's already going to be running operationally. You can move the district office, you can move the online program, the ATF, there's so much space over there. And we should move it there. Because, and you can find space for M and O there. And then Hawthorne can be, we can decide what to do with Hawthorne and maybe the city's running Hawthorne with their early education programs and. Yes, maybe we decide if we're getting cramped at. Any of those places that we move something over there, but it gives us more options, but right now, I think we, we should look at where we, what we have. Because Hawthorne requires work. It requires work with money that we don't have. We, it would be better to put the money into the high school and make it really sing.
So we, we can bring back more of a specific plan for you, but if, we've looked at what the needs are for the district office and I don't see that. Fitting into the high school, but we can. We can.
Yeah. And Dr. Reggie, uh, yeah, exactly, um, it, it is something that we could definitely explore. Um, we, we have about just now, I, I think some of my, the numbers we had, we need about twenty-nine. Spaces at least, uh, of office space. Um, and, and most of those are offices. Um, so, so that, that's going to be in, a little difficult to put into high school. Nonetheless, you know, um, it is part of what we're thinking about through the RFP process. It's to hopefully, you know, also see if we could get funds from a developer. To help with some of that uh, initial move, a, and you could sometimes get that upfront, like an upfront payment. Uh, to secure a sort of, like whether it's a lease agreement or whether. It's an exclusive negotiating agreement, whichever way you go, a lot of times you can get some upfront funds. And then from there, you're able to, uh, you know, utilize those funds for doing these types of projects, cause. Uh, even at the high school, you'll, you'll have to do some, some work to separate offices, to separate space. Make secure, you know, ha- have some sort of secure access for public to be able to visit district office. Spaces and, you know, we'll have to think through that, uh, but e- essentially, we could look at both and I'm hearing what you're saying, we'll, we'll look at, we'll look at that. We'll look also at parking and do a, a side analysis of what we have now versus. Uh, what could potentially be done and also in that analysis, I hear you, you, you'd like to hear or, or know. In regards to the cost, so we'll, we'll get, we'll get some of that, uh, in, in that analysis as well.
I mean, I think when we talk about. The swim gym is gonna have that whole. That, you know, the weight room's gonna move and those other areas are gonna move, you're not gonna have anything in that space. You could move something else there and you can create office space in another place, it doesn't mean you're putting office space in the swim gym, it means you're moving something else in that space. And creating office space, it can be, say, for example, in B two. Because you already have your bulletproof glass there and security there that you could create more offices in that area. Potentially by moving things around. And you can move the district office there with the other admin, you have. A lot of office space that was over at B one, I think that. It, it, I think it's worth looking at, we just haven't looked at it with fresh eyes, you're just kind of living with, like. What, what was there, do you know what I'm saying? And I think if you looked at it and said, how do we, let's put it this way, if you had no choice, what would you do? Could you figure it out? I mean, could you make it work in a really ideal way? If that was your space, it's a lot of space, there's a lot, when we look at. At B four, there was a lot of space in there, I mean, it, you could resize offices.
We're adding twenty-eight thousand square feet in building C just there alone.
Right, but, so I think that by looking at it creatively, like if you just thought, I, these are all the programs and we need to find spaces for this. In a way that's ideal, how would you reconfigure that? Um. It's all interior space, not like you're building out new things, you're really, and you're moving things out anyway, so. Really planning to put the space in there, it's. It can be new, it's going to be secure, it's, it's so much more efficient to me. Than trying to shoehorn it into Hawthorne right now. When.
Well, I wouldn't say shoehorn it, we need to campus.
But it's going to need work and. Let's just say we wanna redo Hawthorne, let's say that we do, uh, it opens, at least Hawthorne opened to have. The possibility of having it redone, you're not gonna have programming that it can move that could have, that could be there, it did. I don't think you should operate another campus. If you can fit into this campus, which is gonna be, it should be premier. It really should. And it could be. And then you can decide what to do with Hawthorne.
I mean, I would agree with you that I would wanna operate another campus if we had a solution.
Right, so I think we should consider that.
But I would. Be realistic about. I, I would not wanna shoehorn the district, if you're gonna put the district offices on the high school campus, they should all be centrally located in one area. Cause like they mentioned, security is gonna be an issue.
I'm not suggesting otherwise, I'm saying that, it, it seems to me there is a possibility to do that. And I think we should look at it. Because I think there's, I think it's. It's more efficient that way.
Yeah, it, it, it impacts parking too then, so it, it. Fits into part of the assessment that you're asking for, is there's parking because we have a lot of visitors that come in, so. Um, and I know I've parked at the high school even during the day and I, there's been times where I can't find a spot at all and thank goodness for the.
That's why I think that that drop-off area, like short-term parking in the front is perfect, and that's like a great entry. You have visitors coming and visiting the district and they're parking based off there, there's a guard there, there's short-term parking there, they walk up to. The stair, the steps to the front of that building, it's really impressive.
The turn, the turnaround.
Right.
It is, but it does require a lot of banning though, would you have that, because parents and kids. Do funny things when they have drop-offs, these, you know.
Hey, but you're gonna have manning there anyway.
Yeah, I'm saying. And then neighbors get upset and then.
But now it's not to me on the rental.
Right, it's a backdoor.
Then you have it, you ride in and you.
There's a protocol on anything, you know, the carpool line.
Right.
Um, how many cars are we talking about, do you think would fit?
I think it'd be about ten, ten to twelve, because I'm, I'm just thinking like, the district office, like.
There's like, the, I mean. You know, thirty. Forty cars.
When you have visitors here, do they park? They park on the street.
Yeah.
They, they would park on the street.
I'm sorry, I'm talking about like, just how is just the district office set? Like, the parking is. I, I, I don't think that there would be enough parking in the high school.
And we're out of student spots now.
Right, really, they're turning, they're turning away students, so we can't give any more time for students now.
You know, we, we're aspirationally hoping to raise the population, let's say we're fifty hundred. You know, the proportion there, like we, we already would probably not have enough slots for students if we just increased the student.
With the current population for the number of students in this school.
Number of students in the school. Um, so, it, you know, and we lose spots as the year goes on, the margins, every guy was, since your parents decided to. So, my point is, to Dr. Ray's point about, you know, I mentioned career day earlier, but like we are now out of student spots. Um, then I think that would only get increasingly more challenging with the growing population.
And, and, and one other, one other thing to consider is, um, if this land is developed, uh, one of the. Perhaps. The, the, what'll work out for a developer really, from everything we've seen thus far, is multifamily housing. And if that happens, um, essentially. An unintended consequence of, of having family housing, right, is that you'll have more situations where people will wanna park on the street. Uh, because they have two or three vehicles or whatever the case may be, that may also impact, you know, uh, the plans of the actual developments. Uh, but that's, that's another thing where like parking is going to be something we will have to closely look at, especially because of the impact of. If the district office is developed into housing, that will then create some traffic in regards to parking, so, um. Uh, it's, it's, it's something that we'll definitely look at through all areas, uh, but that's something also that we, we need to assess there as well.
Rafael, would you, would a developer come in and wanna build a parking lot? Some parking structure?
We will be li- hearing like just various different proposals. And really, uh, we will, the, the way it'll work is, you know, the, the developers will come in. And look at different types of proposals, we, we've already had some sort of idea and from what we could tell, the multifamily housing seems to be the most. Uh, the, the one that'll generate the most revenue for both the developer and for the district in the long run. But with that said, th- there's nothing that can't be said where a developer wouldn't be able to come in and propose. Something like that, but it, what we think is that it's, it's a little difficult to. To, to generate that much revenue, but we, we'll, we'll receive different proposals from developers and that might be something that, that can come up.
Um, if the weight room is moved into the new building at some point, perhaps. Um, if the weight room is moved into the new building at some point, perhaps the weight room, that weight room, um, the swim gym can. Be its visiting team space. Yeah, there's a lot of access, a lot of good access to the fields and the gym. And then where you don't mix the teams, keep them separate.
For security.
Yeah, but that's when they want their own space.
It's a lot of things to consider and it would be nice to consider, to look at the plans at this stage and consider.
Well, we still have some master planning to do with all this, so we're gonna take all that into account, we'll do the parking study and, um. You know, we'll look at the facilities we have at the high school currently, especially, you know, the bridge area, the the tunnel and we'll just.
And the space is opening up by opening B three and B four. They're gonna be moving people out of A, moving people out of B, I want to see then.
B three, B four seem to have extra space, a handful.
So, it's our last question.
Uh, yes, B three probably. Two o- two offices right now, not here, one on the east floor a little bit more.
Oh, right, and that opens that up out of A.
Right.
So, they move from one place to another, there's still, it's leaving an empty space.
Yeah, so that'll be part of our entire master planning, you know, process we're gonna go through pretty shortly here. We're we're finishing up the needs assessment currently.
Yeah.
And then we're gonna move into the master planning, so we can.
Sorry, to your point, we're, we will soon be having so much more space just with B three, B four coming online.
Right, I understand, I think. Think it through all the way, so if we can, if we plan to do a, uh. Ground lease from this, this property here, where we should be planning where this programming is moving. Ideally, and I, you know, if it can leave across the street. As one of, one of those options, or what, how much of that could move across the street? And, um, and could it, and could it work? I I also think that you should have to the city about a parking structure here. Even they have Rockberry, they have.
You mean in lieu of other developments?
Yeah.
Those building parking stuff.
Or they could do offices below and they could do.
They'll live all around here, they're gonna wanna live next to a giant parking starch plant. They're not.
It's it's something to consider, I mean, you'd have to talk to the residents, they may want parking.
They want two hour free parking.
They may want, they may want parking that they can. It could be private parking, they may do parking that they can buy, the top floors could be rented, yeah, with. There's, there is, what you're talking about is that there is wanting to be an if you can parking in this area, you see there is an if you can park. It could solve problems for people, we go to Rockberry, there's never parking at Rockberry, you could walk over and you can park here. It 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 could create, I, it could create a solution for somebody. It's just, we should think, consider everything. But I think, um, you know, it's just, it's just another thing to consider in that way, but these are just. These things, uh, where's M and O going, where, you know? What's the design for that upper area, what is the design, like, do we wanna do it without a lot of, that could really create a problem for all the alumni from Beverly Hills High School, because. They all see it a lot and they can't fathom that you wouldn't have a whole lot, but we, it really. You cannot have a lawn from the sidewalk all the way up to the building in, in this game, I.
No.
Can't. I think we have to have some designs for what is that going to look like, and we should maximize it. To our benefit, so that we can really use our space and make it a really great experience and. There's a reason to keep that whole lawn, if you can have drop off space and you can make it more secure because of that. And it and it could look really fantastic and it could alleviate all the, the jamming, jamming of entering into the park. You can have a safe place for dropping off and picking up people and you could have short term parking for visitors. And it could look really fantastic.
Long time ago, they discussed putting, uh, a wall up, a retaining wall up from the school, this was next, but. Um, and put on that bottom part of the front lawn, but parking like underground, hidden where on the top would be. A planted like a wide roof kinda thing or something, and and so they had talked about.
I think it'd be within our budget as well. But I think that we should, we should consider some different options and then we should, based on what we think. And whatever feedback we need to get, we should, we should look at drawings.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing my colleagues advocate for, just so you guys are clear, is looking at options, if this is ground lease. Where the programs move to, that may not be Hawthorne. Okay, it'll not be Hawthorne, uh, understanding, I think everybody understands that Hawthorne is an option, but creating other options.
Yeah.
Uh, the 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 savings on taking the parking lot out of building C, correct?
Yeah.
Uh, and where we're gonna park cars on the campus, if there was a plan for that upper area, where in the lowest now. Um, of course, and then the M and O question, uh, would be the last question of where that could be located, will there be. Open spaces on campus once B three, B four finish to move to, so M and O can reoccupy.
And tennis courts.
That's part of the effort.
Please, and maybe ten, we've got some championship tennis teams, maybe the tennis team, the tennis courts while you're waiting for revised permits to be approved. Maybe they can go, you know, what now, we need to have, we need to have a plan for where the tennis courts.
Yes, Steve, when you start on building C, because there's no tennis courts anywhere else.
Yeah, the two, well, two and.
Oh, the bottoms.
Right by the.
So was that the or- the dark orange box?
No, that, this is the future rendering, but currently the two tennis courts are right here.
Yeah, right by gate ten, where gate ten is.
And they're, they're gonna stay?
For right now.
For now.
They'll be, my understanding is the new tennis courts will be built before those are taken. Well, last two to go. Not necessarily, right now, there's no. Yeah, yeah, and right now, yeah, until we do the south fields, we don't have to touch these two tennis courts.
But is there a possibility, or, I mean, that's for you guys to sort out. I, in my opinion, uh, is M and O staying there somewhere, having an option for parking, if that's a possibility, not having the parking under building C. And moving what's here over there with all the extra space that we're creating. And I I'd like to understand that.
Okay, so I would like to reconvene this as soon as you guys have the answers to these questions.
Yes, that's a good idea.
Becomes a timely issue, especially for one of recently many plans, so.
Are we thinking about Elrodeo as well today?
Oh, we didn't have a plan, but when I saw your question, I was gonna, I could bring up that, so I planned one more time. Before we leave the high school, I wanted to ask about the ticket booth in the new building. Okay, tickets, tickets have become this now, for the most part, I don't know how important a ticket booth is. I don't know, um, if that could be utilized for office space, since we're talking office space right now.
Or other things, I mean, for security.
Right, right, I don't know how you guys feel about that, but I think dedicating an entire ticket, but I mean, we've operated events at our high school, no ticket.
How about concession stands, because I feel like they.
Yes, I didn't touch, I didn't touch.
Yeah.
Noah, I can't hear you, what did you just say, Noah? Noah, what were you talking?
To relook at the ticket booth, uh, because tickets aren't really sold or managed in a booth anymore, so. Better utilize that space, you know.
Okay, alright.
I do think, you have to look at it through the eyes, if we wanna finish the school and we wanna be efficient with our operating. I mean, this is all part of that as well, so if that's, you know, if we, we have to look at it in that way. And if we can do it, I mean, if it's such a huge compromise in every which way, then you, then maybe we have to reconsider what. What are options?
You wanna make the best decision with the information you have.
Yes.
And information has changed since this was originally designed.
Right, so, and you have the space again, the bridge and all the office space there, that this could be. Programming or whatever moves there, there's same difference there, if you move CP over to B four, then you have all that other space, there's a lot of space opening up. Or you could be moving things around and and you could still put the offices in an ideal situation. And you could still have other classrooms and space for everything else and just their ideal spots, so that we kind of move. As we evolve instead of looking at, here's elements we do have, now, if you had to make it work, how would you make it work, and could you, and I think you can. I just think you can.
Can I ask a different question, going back to what we were just looking at? Um, what about, tell us about the ventilation, like. Obviously, since COVID, there were a lot of concerns about whether or not there's ample ventilation, you know, hopefully there will not be another pandemic, but. Um, what is, how is that configured, or are there any special considerations, um, that you guys have given?
Okay, just to let you know, by the record, our mechanical engineer hasn't signed B one, B two, B three and B four. Already COVID, COVID friendly, I mean to say it has a, what they call a DOA system, that. Brings in fresh air by a separate system and draws out number of required air exchanges, and that's already above what. What we require for COVID, same thing with this, with the kind of air exchange, so it's not really a concern. So, we're hitting both the the mechanical code and and both the requirements. Apparently, it was not, it was decided during then when we didn't have COVID, but apparently it also hit that mark.
Right, thank you, thank you.
So I, going back to the ground line, is the direction is that we are gonna have drop offs over there and. Because they are, they are already designed, so we need to have some sort of direction then. Are we gonna move toward that direction to just have a drop off area that I think it can accommodate, as Tim said, a lot like ten to fifteen. Parking this lot.
You mean in the drive in area, sweetie?
Yeah.
What are you talking about? I mean, if you're getting rid of the parking lot, yeah, we have to have something. But if one goes with the other, you have to get rid of the parking lot first, cause otherwise, where are you gonna get the parking lot?
Well, one of the things to consider, we're talking about parking, is that E V C S or. You know, the green parking, necessary requirement, if you take out parks, you need to find out some place that divide.
Yeah.
On site, I mean, if you pass through the lawn and. That drive. The E V C S could be anywhere on site, right? Like, I don't understand why. You could make this. This could be a drive through. It's a lot, oops.
Sorry. Just wanna make sure everyone else can see what you're. Pointing at.
Like, this, if this was to here, and I don't know what the elevations are, how that all works from a, from how the land is. But if if it went like this, and you drove, you did like a drive through drop off.
Can you move a little bit so I can see what you're saying?
So say the lawn was like this. Yes, thank you. So, and then you could have, even if it's a little before, then you could have a guard here, you could walk up this way to enter. And you could have parking here and you drive in and you drive out.
UCLA has ten of those.
It's everywhere.
Where his hall is, where.
And you still have this approach that can have lawn where you can sit and as you walk up, you have this. But this could be more of like, uh.
You're literally gonna put a street right in the middle of the lawn.
It's not a street, it, this would be redesigned, so you'd have lawn up above and then this would be like a drop off area, like when you enter many. Public buildings, I think of the Wallace, how you walk, you drive up to the Wallace and you drive in and out.
It's got parking and a drive through.
Yes, same with City Hall.
Hamilton High School, same thing.
There's a million places like that.
It's very popular in the school, we see that in a lot of schools that we have.
It's not a new idea.
They did, no, the the gamble is what the community will say about it.
Right, but the community i- is not gonna wanna fund another bond either, so there's gotta be some give and take.
Yes, that's it.
I think if it's designed beautifully, which I accept.
Right, and you still have that, I feel of the lawn and that it's that approach.
Yeah.
And there's still a grand lawn, but it's just more petite and actually more secure.
Right, more secure.
More secure, it's more, it's more, uh, you know, environmentally downed.
Doesn't need to be as excessive as what the line that you have can be.
Right, it could be like this, but also right now.
That's not really my concern, I mean. Just a bunch of people driving, they really have to beautify it with some decorated.
Right, you could put some trees. Feel pretty, can see it, right? These are pike is trees.
Oh, pike is tree.
The city will come take those pike is trees out.
They will. Anyway, that's the idea.
What should be the other direction?
Alright. It could be adjacent, parking here, in these, in these. There you go. I, you know, I wonder.
Well, we could take this straight to D S A.
I'm just wondering if you can have some parking up here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then you can have parking here.
Yeah. The bottom with the facility trailer, yeah, that'd be interesting, it was supposed to be delivery drop off. Yeah, yeah, it's kinda going up there. So that's a good idea to see if we can utilize our park, plus it's right off the field, so it's still sort of the athletic area.
So you can have parking here, parking here, parking here.
We still need to consider about this, this stuff, uh, you know, the grand. What they call it, grand lawn, is used for graduation.
No, I think right, this is gonna stay on the field. One issue we're gonna have is, one issue we're gonna have is when eventually you do get to the south side. Field work, where you're gonna have graduation, that's gonna be the question.
It's gonna be at Elrodeo in the beautiful auditorium.
Your high school graduation?
Yeah. Initially, at least, yeah.
Be your sedentary.
Or by that point, you could have B four down here. It'll be beautiful. I mean, even to your point, seventeen hundred seats, right?
Yeah.
In building C, that's massive, and then I don't, this is just all rain here, right?
Yeah, so.
It's a good thing to lift the wraps too.
Yeah.
It's originally, it was on, the lawn sites, you lift it.
Yeah, and I'll go this way. For my own. I I would like to find other somewhere to do the parking than the front lawn. I don't mind using the drive in area of building C for drop off right now, but just I, that that digging into the. I think that's treading bizarre territory.
Are you suggesting that where, where the little people are would be a mini turnaround, is that what you mean?
No, right, right on the side of building C, right in there, I, that's where I would put the turnaround. It's the least invasive, it makes sense to put it there, against the building, it gives you to pick up some extra parking.
But how would you go in and go out, because turnaround is like a semi circle in my mind, right?
I would get the turnaround. I don't mind, yeah, I don't mind taking a section there to do what you want, I wouldn't take the whole thing.
I don't know, that makes sense, because look, you've got this walk in here.
It's just my aesthetic view.
Because you're, you're gonna get stuck in the lawn too.
No, 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 cause I think it should all be about town.
Yeah.
It should be.
I think you can make it look really pretty.
So I just like the idea of having almost park space, like green space, that's, there's gonna be a lawn, but it'd be, there'd be green space.
But I think you could make that look like.
Cause we're buried by buildings all around us, this high school, there's really no rest for that, and there's been spotting on the campus that we can be. I imagine if you have some sort of drought tolerant planting, some benches, things like that, so people can retreat out there, that would be kind of the future of that.
I think you could do that here and I think you can still have.
The other part's too graded.
It's just gonna be green, it doesn't have to be all summer.
It can be beautiful, just like.
I think it's about design, it's not, I I think you can do it, can make it D D.
I'm just gonna put this out there, but in the beginning, we were tasked to retain the historic. That's why we we retained the tuning fork and whatnot, but if, uh, I'm just saying this. Just in case you change your mind, then then we could go the route, then just saying it, we were tasked at one time.
To keep this?
To retain the historic value of, you know, we started this, not that, uh, lawn.
That was five hundred million dollars ago.
Exactly, you have to call Don Blake and talk to him about that. Here are half a billion dollars for that money. That's when we had seven hundred bucks to do our school.
I mean, even if the tuning fork becomes a lot shorter, so here, maybe, but. Yeah, we've been operating under the. Guys that that was sacred, you don't touch it. Sounds like we're opening our minds now. I think for first, I think for the community, as long as you have that staircase going up.
Don't get the grand front lawn, it'll be.
Yeah, my my feeling is I just, I'm looking at it, I just don't think we need, even to your point about the opportunity to draw on it. Even to your point, I don't think we need all of this, you could still accomplish what you want, maybe on this part.
The idea being is that you could. Use that area and address those needs with that area while making it beautiful, I didn't, that's just. I don't need to see it drawn the way I'm putting my finger on it at all, I mean, I would leave that as our architects to.
But I also still want security considerations as well, because we're.
Well, that's a given.
Well, I know it's a given, but I mean like, you know, as you're breaching the. This perimeter, right, I mean, it's something to just consider, I don't know.
You may have a fence.
We're gonna have it anyways.
We have our fence now, yeah.
Right, but if you have more people in cars, they have more agency when they are, you know, coming through and. Unfortunately, we get people who shouldn't be driving.
You can have a guard stationed there.
Just I just want, I do want to stay there.
When you drive in, you drive in to see the guard and then they'll direct you to.
Right, so that every person or car is.
Or we can consider pushing the fencing that we had along the street back to behind the parking.
Or a material other than.
So man, he was always planning to have a perimeter fence and and right at the bottom of the tuning fork, there was. So if you just push it back, that doesn't affect that really. The idea is that we originally is that we want. Students to be able to enter the high schools who remain entrance, that's in Beverly Hills. Right, where the attendance offices, where you should be entering high school.
The way it streamlined before.
Yeah, well, that's that's why the curb cut was designed, it's it's basically what you're saying is you're adding a turnaround.
Putting it up there so that you can. Drop off or you can short term. As opposed to having the congestion on that street, which creates zone on safety issues. And I think. And and there's a lot of reasons why we should do it and and I think that it's it's worth. Exploring, so to answer your question, we should explore what that could be. And explore what the solutions are up above. And how do we move these things over there and there's a lot of. Space planning between all of you really, because it's all the programming that's moving that you just went through. Room by room, it's opening up a lot of space and it's, it's deciding how do you move that space around on this campus.
We'll do that, we'll take a step back and.
Thank you.
Some space.
Thank you so much. Uh, for El Rodeo, I feel like we still need to address. Exterior one, yeah.
What else was left on?
I mean, here's my concern. Sarah mentioned that there may not be enough basketball. So I I'd like to know from Sarah, if I'd like to know from Sarah, if the site. If the site area, the outside side area is meeting the need of her program. And that is, does she have enough basketball, does she have enough play structures, does she have enough roof thing? Does she have enough shade structure? And to that, all of that, I don't wanna get there and then find out that. I don't wanna be this before.
We wanna learn something.
Right, so this area has not been thought through, I love that they thought through now the um soccer field and I think that's great. And I think that we should be looking at up in Sarah specifically, because this is her.
She knows.
So that does that early education area, like the TK, do they have the space they need, do they have? Trees and green space and do they have shade and do do the kids that on the courtyard have? Areas to rest in the shade and I mean, is it meeting all the needs that she could see, so we really can make that really great.
Well, as far as shade goes, I think we're almost kind of maximizing as much shade as we can do without. Obviously putting any shade on the soccer field. Uh, we have these two shade structures and then we have these trees that fall into the courtyard area. And there's also some trees in these planters, if I'm correct. I think we're utilizing as much. Place to put shade or putting.
Right, but what about?
And then so what.
Kind of sacrifice between the soccer field and the basketball court, and quite frankly, like in a school, we five hundred students elementary. I don't think you need more than like what you have, right? So it's not such a huge school.
But just just to touch on that, we so we had three, after hearing Sarah's comments, the architect added two more half courts. Those are those yellow squares and all we did, all we sacrificed there was moving the four squares and moving uh. Tether ball down there in that corner, I didn't really sacrifice much by adding those two half.
So now it's four courts if you add. So that's my question, so it does Sarah feel like she's getting on the part what she needs there and. Over in that area, is there not the ability to put something like those little round tables that have the shade? And it can fit there so that the kids that while they're playing need to fit and fit in the shade and they can drink water and they.
Draw a lot of the stuff that can be done, but can use on the plan, so.
So then at what point will these plans be considered by you final for submission? So that everything can be approved and built out by June of twenty twenty four, like what are the, what's the timeline?
Is the design of that new soccer field, because there are some retaining wall that they are designing right now, I think they are gonna have it in the next. Two, three weeks, they're gonna go to DSA after that, it's behalf of have the contract with the proxy that it's.
Okay, thank you. And do they have landscaping plans for like outside of the fencing and?
We're currently, we're currently working on this landscape plan right now. It wasn't originally included in this.
So now they're adding it there.
And when will the final pricing be again, cause that again, that's, you remember this was. A a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar total expense and they were gonna. Anyway, I assume it's gonna pay for like three fifty or some.
So the thought is that, you know, after our last meeting, we realized uh. Rough order management pricing wasn't adequate, so that's why the architects put together final plans, we're gonna get actual pricing. And then, you know, I'm assuming it's gonna be close to what they. Priced originally, especially because we added some electrical outlets out around the field.
Will there be a bidding process for that?
Uh, no, I mean.
Unfortunately, we are under the contract. But we can, we can have a comparison price.
Perspective. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, colleagues?
No, thank you for everything, guys. Oh, did you get an answer on the? Oh, so we had emailed, cause some folks from the community had asked about turf and then I think you provided a response on some of the terms.
On the one that I. And was going to provide some information on the existing field. So.
Please let us know, thank you.
Okay. Terrific, anything else, Tim?
Uh, we also have the south side athletic fields. See that?
Let's talk about it. And if I understand, we're potentially looking at some ways to do that in a cost saving way.
None of the cost savings for me, we're we're gonna present is what we currently have. What we haven't done.
Sorry, this, now this doesn't like this table. Why just do this?
Tim, how do you envision doing, doing up the use and is it gonna be a baseball and a softball?
Yeah, they're separate, separate fields.
Which one will be the softball?
Looking so well, we're setting slides. I guess before the slide comes up, can I just ask, what are the thoughts on funding for this part of the project? Since we're already gonna be out of money, let's see. So that's coming up in our slides here as well, and just share the screen, thank you.
That's fine.
I wanna share the screen to those people.
Oh, yeah.
Who are.
And Tim, we currently have a full baseball team and boys and girls softball.
Just girls softball.
Just girls.
Yeah. His numbers are up, baseball wise will be, it continues to grow, we'll have a JV team.
Great, so you're seeing that moving in the right direction as.
Tom's doing a good job in terms of. Of making it a place kids wanna come and play.
Is it possible the softball field can be a dual purpose, yeah?
No.
It's just totally different.
Totally different, you have sixty foot bases versus ninety foot bases.
No, not for baseball, but can it be used for something else and softball? Like, I don't need.
Yeah, yeah. You didn't, uh, no, there's not enough room, kickball room. You maybe I'll put a half practice.
To dual purpose it, it's only the girls soft softball team?
Yeah.
How long is the season?
They start in recently January, it's game start in February and they go through in the big. And then there is, yeah, well, there's also talk of bringing back Little League softball in terms of the city now, there would be a facility. JPA wise, or like at Beverly Hills, not like Beverly Hills baseball, Little League, if you Beverly Hills softball.
But it becomes just practice space for like anybody and everybody, because we need it. It's not that it has to be a specific purpose, it's just that it's. People, teams will use it.
Sunrise yoga.
Alright, so again, that's that's our athletic plaza there, um, between C, the pool and swim gym. And then from there, that's how you enter. Into the bigger shape, there is the baseball field, um, bleacher seating behind, we have about two hundred seats. And then at the top here. That's the retaining wall that uh, like this cradles the uh. Baseball field, there is some seating and pantry area up there as well, that you can look over, you can see over the baseball field, the pool, everything is a little bit stuff. Um, that you can see, I think, where uh. It's, I think it's like four hundred people or so. And then. The smaller shape is. I got it. The smaller uh field, that's the softball field. And then um. We also have our new football field and track, four hundred meter track. Uh, the program supported are. I mentioned baseball, softball, football, lacrosse.
Soccer.
Soccer track, long jump, triple jump, high jump. Discuss shot put. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And Tim, where is the access point? For a community to the. Track, to the track and the football field.
That's all gonna be coming through, uh, I still on here, that's all gonna be coming through here and then you go through here.
So everyone he goes through, makes a left and either goes right or left. And then, what is, what are those little um green boxes in front of the swim gym?
Plant area, it's it's a plaza.
And then what's the um lighter brown to the left of this one gym, like closer to the street?
This guy, that's a, that's a story.
Okay, that opens up, sorry, that opens up to the track and field, got you, thank you, sorry. How do you enter from the parking up above? Like building A, building A part.
So uh, building A parking, you would have to come down Heath and then you you go down the grand stairs. And there's also an elevator that's next to the stairs.
And that's also where there's a turnaround.
Uh, we don't have the turnaround at the end. The turnaround up here, that that's not there.
Was there ever a thought to put some sort of throughway that joined this one gym to building C?
An actual cupboard?
Yeah, or yeah, just. Yeah, either a covered walkway or some sort of corridor that connects the two.
No, that's actually a fire lane to get to.
And anyway, code, you cannot do that, if you connect these two buildings by any structure, you have to bring the other code off.
Yeah. Everything we're doing, we're trying not to just.
Okay, so. Back to my money question. I think based on our conversation today, our next slides are kinda gonna change now that we take a step back and look at all the numbers again and space planning. But uh.
Before moving, one idea of saving that we are working on this right now is just because right now the site is gradually sloping down to our. It's the way it's designed, these two fields, the softball and baseball are on the same level. By lowering the softball field or or that, that might be a little bit of saving, that's something that we are working. With team and their team to see how much saving would be, if we just, because not only that, it's gonna eliminate a lot of effort, it's gonna make the. Retaining wall that we have vital and be. Uh, a large order, so that's one thing that we are looking at right now.
Sub level.
Give the football fields at the same level?
Right now it's on the same level, we are gonna take this softball field lower.
That'll be almost basically almost three level.
Well, now they're not on the same. We're looking above, I can't see the elevator here. Um, so you wanna design it on the same level, what are you gonna do?
Design it on the same level, it's designed on the same level, I just wanna make it seem like what it is right now.
Because if you make it at one level, it's not more expensive.
Right, but wasn't it always the the fields were raised over the football field?
The baseballs are for, yes.
Yeah, there is elevation change either.
If you are both directions, if right now, it's basically, it just wants, it's hard to explain it right now, was.
Oh, you're you're talking about within the baseball and softball, having different levels for those two.
Yes, yeah.
And so the softball field will be dropped.
Yes.
Once again. That might save money on this south side project, uh, we. From, we're starting a deficit. Going into this project. Well, I think whether we take the parking lot out or not, even if we take the parking lot out of building C, maybe it neutralizes our expenses, it's been finishing building C at the end. But you still don't have any money for the south side work, so I'm still curious where where is it now? Like I said, after our conversation today, I think this these slides might change, but um. As we get into. Let me just go back to full screen here.
Now, what are you asking, like in another way, what would happen, for example, if we did building C, but we didn't do the pool and we didn't change? The fields, is that what you're asking?
It's it's gonna happen regardless, it's whether you're gonna have the money at the end to do the.
Right, exactly.
Cause you have to do, you can't touch that area until Conheim comes down, you can't take Conheim, so C is done, right? So, argumentatively, that's what I'm curious about, because from my understanding with the the south side work is. Very expensive, um, it's not a few million dollars, it's dozens and. It was originally in the. But it's okay, so.
Is it required by law, the south side work? Okay, so so and this is, uh, this is not a suggestion, I'm just trying to understand. So conceivably, we could. Complete building C.
Yes.
And then we would tear down Conheim.
Yes.
Or leave it, but most like more than likely demolish it. Right, and then in in a world where we would only spend money that we have, not borrow. We could stop.
Yeah, that was always my.
That is what you're asking? I'm just trying to understand. Y'all have to put something work on, y'all have to. Well, that's different, we could level it, it could, you know, that's another story, but much, much cheaper than doing. All this field work. I'm just trying to understand what are, what are the realm of possibilities following building C?
Nothing is changed. Since our last presentation, the only thing is like this bumps a little bit more to the positive side, because we negotiated that change order for. Uh, amendment eight that was brought up the last time, so this ninety seven is a, we conservatively, when we calculated this, we said we are gonna be about. Five and a half million dollar saving, now it's four point seven. So this number, the ninety seven million dollar that you have at the bottom here, right now is the difference between that. So this number, the ninety seven million dollar that we have at the bottom here, right now, is the difference between that twenty and a half million dollar red at a. Four point seven that we have right now, so this multi literally, this is the positive side. So, again, this number, nothing is changed so far. One, big thing that you need to consider is the abandonment of the legacy old wells that we have at the side. That's something that. Again, I think you have to do it, if you don't want to do this outside, then can be postponed a little bit, because you can, first of all, you cannot do this outside, we don't do. But at the same time, you have some old, uh, old wells that have some issues in the middle of the school that, that should be somehow added.
Right.
So, that's another project, unfortunately, that money is not going to go through and toward any educational facilities, but that's the money that you have to spend, yeah, so. At the same time, the upper field and the future tennis court, that's another thing that they added here, we don't know. How much the cost would be roughly, I can tell you like standard, like any tennis court costs about like five hundred thousand dollar per field. But I'm assuming that project is going to cost like five, six million dollar roughly. Uh, if you want to add some parkings, parkings, like separate parkings over there, so like six, seven million dollar. And you also still have the airport that we are working with DTSC and AQMD, that, that's another challenge that we have. And that's another, to me, like you think to twenty million dollars, in a worst case scenario, that you have to find the money, if you want to do all of this. So those two red items that, we, we don't have the number, I just want to have you, give you some ballpark.
And this, this seventy six million for building C, that includes the subterranean parking?
Yes.
So then it could be like.
Let's, let's, let's say like about ten fifteen.
Yeah, but then it would even out with the tennis courts, et cetera.
Yes.
Yeah. So, if we did everything. And you put in the twenty million for the earthwork and another seven for the tennis courts, I've been under twenty seven million, did all about.
Well, let's add the thirty million dollar to that if you want, that you are in red.
Right, so it could be eighty one million.
If you want to do everything.
Now, if we eliminate the parking. You could potentially say fifteen. Really? And then, and the redesign of the fields, you could maybe say some.
That, I don't have the number yet, because the airport again, I just don't want to say something that.
Right. So, but for sure, I, I would, I really think we got to move on the no parking. We don't have a choice? Because look.
Well, I mean.
We have a better chance of getting in striking range.
It's.
I mean, let's see what the numbers look like.
Yeah, here's, here's my thought on that, if, if we have ninety seven left in the wallet and. Let's say we spend seventy six on building C and have the party, right? Then you got twenty left, so you're either going to, and if, and let's say you don't, then you have thirty five left. So you have twenty million or thirty five million left, what else, what else from the list you're going to do with that?
Well, we want to consider this.
Well, that's right.
Yeah.
No, I, I know the answer in my head, I'm curious what you guys.
You gotta do the oil well.
Right, so what comes off of retaining, what comes off of the retaining walls and you got to do the lawn?
You can't take the retaining wall down, you need the retaining.
Well, we need to, we need to retain walls if we're doing fields.
If you're doing a field, you need to retain walls, you're not doing.
Well, we need to have two of the retaining walls if you do the building C.
Yeah.
The one that you're.
Yeah, no, that, I know, but that, but that's all the retainers, right?
How many baseballs, footballs do?
So, the, the one that we're talking about is only soft.
We have one softball handle and we have the baseball.
It's probably one big one, the softball field. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right.
The twenty million is basically for that, two of them are connected, but the one that are connected and are up there close to building C, regardless, you have to build it, if you want to build that upper. Uh, walking and seating area that team was.
So even if you get rid of the parking in building C. But you do the retaining walls and the legacy wells. You're still over.
Yeah.
And, and we want to do the great lawn.
Between fifty and eighty million.
Right, so what I was saying, oh, it's that.
Parking, because.
No, no, I'm not arguing for that, Mary, I'm arguing what we shouldn't be doing.
Right.
Okay.
Can I, wait.
I want to ask. So, so let me finish my thought, please, what we shouldn't be doing and what really isn't a conversation for this bond, is the actual south side field work. If we're going to be realistic about the expenditures of this bond, we, we got to take that off the menu. You know?
The forty million?
Yeah. That's, that just has to be put into something else, in your future bond or something, we, we just can't, so.
I think we got to figure out how you can finish it.
That's, we have.
Yeah, this, my feeling is you should figure out how you can finish the school, because you're not going to get a future bond. Yeah, you're just going to get a loan and then. Have to be finished and get a loan to finish the rest. And that's why I'm saying like the district office could move over there, you should minimize your costs wherever you can and finish this to the best that you can, because people have been waiting for this high school to be finished. So to the extent that we can finish it.
I agree, I agree with that.
Thinking you're getting a future bond is not.
I don't think we're getting a future.
But to say you're not going to do it because it's going to be for a future bond is not, it's, you have to say this is what it's going to look like and how do we make this look great and how do you finish it? To the best that you can.
Whether we borrow money or not to finish it, however we do it.
Yeah.
There's only so much our current bond will be able to foot.
I understand.
I want to have an understanding of is, I don't want to start a project where we don't have the guaranteed funding.
I understand, so that's why I'm saying we should move forward and figure out, can we get rid of the parking underneath? And all the other things, let's get the answers to these questions and then let's look at what we have, then you can, then you can strike out if you want it. But we, we have answers, we need to get answers to this thing.
We do.
Then I want, can I ask a question now?
We have to go down this path.
I, I, I want to ask this one question. You have potential funds minus future projects? I'm trying to figure out which future projects are totaling sixty seven thousand four hundred and twenty three dollars and six hundred and ninety eight dollars. And then from the future projects up above, or are you looking at other future projects that aren't listed up above?
Uh, I know, uh, Mrs. Marcus, that number below sixty seven is the amount of money we are in, in deficit. To complete the projects above, then we add it in the reimbursement we get from the state seismic mitigation. And now that's how we come up with our deficit of fifty one thousand.
The hazard, no, there is no other project that's not listed in this list, the future projects are the one that are not under contract.
You're not, alright, okay, I understand.
Tell me your support.
So if I may, um, just, uh, talk a little bit, if I, if I'd like, if we can, I'd like to just talk a little bit about like. Um, what the, what the funding sources will look like? So essentially, you're looking at about over fifty million dollars of need, if you do everything. Um, so let's go along to the next slide, please. Um, one of the things that I looked at was regarding modernization funds, so we have approximately. And, and this is in the last, um, funding that, that I got, uh, estimated funding. For the state share of modernization dollars that we would be eligible for. It's looking like we're going to have anywhere from twenty five to thirty million dollars in modernization funds. That about puts us halfway there to do everything. Um, you know, and, and this is modernization dollars essentially, um, and so what I did was I asked, um, Key Gents, our financial advisor for bond and for cops and. And financial, like when we do sort of financial instruments, uh, to come and put together a scenario of what this looks like, so let me just step back a little bit and explain. Um, what modernization funds are. Essentially, these are funds that the state provides, uh, you know, in regards to a share of cost, uh, for the district. So, um, it takes a, a number of years for us to receive the funds and you're only eligible. Over a certain period of time for depending on the age of the building, so in this case, uh, the district is eligible until twenty twenty five. Uh, that's when we become eligible to apply for modernization funds and we'd be able to tap into anywhere from twenty five to thirty million dollars in modernization dollars. Um, the only problem with that is that it would take approximately a good three years for us to get the money, that's what I've seen in average, now, that's with our economy the way it is. You know, uh, currently, or the way it has been in the past couple of years, now, if the economy slows down, which is, which it has done. Um, you could essentially see that it might take a little longer, you know, especially if the governor decides to prioritize different types of funding. Uh, over state bond funds and, and things of that nature, so what, what I'm trying to get to is, it, it, we won't be eligible to twenty twenty five to apply for that. And then it'll take about three years for us to be able to even receive the dollars, which creates your cash flow issue. If we, the only way around this, the only other source that we could potentially go for, really, there's only two sources. Um, that, that we could look at, you could sort of look at developer fees, but, but that really won't bring in too much when it comes to athletic fields. Um, but when we look at, e- essentially, it's a temporary borrowing, like a COPSS, which is a certificate of participation. Um, that we would essentially, uh, finance, um. That's, that's one way, the other way is a bond, uh, which I, I've heard, you know, and I, I don't want, I'm not suggesting for either of these, but I'm just kind of explaining what scenarios are out there. Um, in a COPSS, the, the drawbacks with COPSS are that essentially, they come from general fund. So we would have to make that payment from our general fund dollars. Um, so in this scenario, what I asked Key Gen to do was, okay, show me what it would cost the district to be able to get. Uh, fifty million dollars, uh, in, you know, for, in a thirty year term over, for a COPSS payment. Essentially, the first three years, you know, we'd be able to find a way to not have to issue payments, but then in twenty twenty seven. You know, we would start that two point eight million dollar payment. And then we would make a payment, assuming we received the money from the state in twenty twenty eight. We'd make a thirty million dollar payoff from state funds on June first of twenty twenty eight, and so basically in twenty twenty nine. Our payment would end up being one point eight million, you know, every fiscal year we'd owe one point eight million to this payment now. Uh, the other thing is, you can write this in a way where like, for instance, let's say in twenty twenty eight, you decide to go out for a bond or twenty twenty nine. You can use those funds to pay off any sort of like COPSS, as long as it was specifically related to facilities and it's written in the right way, you can, you can get that done. So you're looking at different scenarios where you can just do the COPSS and do one point eight million essentially for, until twenty fifty three, which is a long time. Or essentially, whenever you do do a new bond, which, you know, i- if that ever ha- happens in the next twenty years or, or, or whatever that timeframe is, you could essentially. You know, use those funds to pay off your COPSS and, and get rid of that obligation. Again, I just want to reiterate, this is a big obligation to make out of your general fund. Um, it, it's a very significant amount, yes.
Interest rate are you assuming on this schedule, this amortization schedule?
Um, so Keaton, i- it's, it's the current tax exempt interest rates, uh, the, uh, I don't have that right in front of me, but they did. Ref, it's the Key Gen's opinion of the current tax exempt interest rates, I believe he mentioned somewhere around four to five percent. But I don't want to quote, don't quote me on that, he did though mention that it's the current rates, you know, competitive rates that we'd be able to qualify for, I could come back to you with that, e- exact amount.
And then there's no prepayment penalty, right, you and I discussed this at different time?
There, there would not be a prepayment penalty. Um, in a, in an ideal scenario, um, if you finish your buildings. Which we will finish our buildings, when we finish our buildings, better said, in twenty twenty four for Overdale and, and when we finish the high schools buildings. I think maybe then, you know, you could see and say, well, maybe that's when you would essentially. Maybe go out for something like a bond, uh, in, in future years, maybe it's twenty twenty six, maybe it's twenty twenty nine. Whenever that happens, you can utilize those funds to pay off this COPSS payment, so essentially this would be sort of like a bridge loan. For it to get you from one bond to the next bond, um, because if not, you're really looking at a one point eight million dollar payment of your general fund. Ongoing, even tapping into your mo- state modernization eligibility funds that we received. Um, you know, a- and, and that's a good twenty to thirty million dollars there, and this is a.
Sorry.
Go ahead, sorry.
If rates go down, can we refinance with a cop at lower than four or five, like maybe in four or five years, go down?
Yes, you can, you, you can definitely refinance in the future, that's another option. This is just kind of like a bridge, a, a, a bridge to get you to where you want to complete everything. Um, you know, and, and the first three years, as you can see, um, they do think that in, you know, if we were to. They were just assuming that, like, you know, this was July first of twenty twenty three, we wouldn't necessarily need it then, it would probably be twenty twenty four. So it might be better at that time, uh, you know, depending on what happens with interest rates. Um, but definitely, we can have Key Gen present more information, more detailed information, if this isn't something we'd like to explore, but I just wanted to at least. Give you all kind of a taste of what that would look like, uh, what the process would be, so essentially. What would happen is we'd enter into a, a COPSS pa- uh, scenario. And in twenty twenty seven, we'd start making payments, we'd then receive the money from the state for modernization eligibility, which we would then use to pay off. Make a lump sum payment to, um, to the COPSS and then from there, we would have like somewhere around one point eight million dollars in ongoing obligations. Um, this is assuming, you know, essentially fifty million dollars that we would receive upfront and then from there, we would have to, uh, make that payment in twenty twenty eight. And then we would continue to make payments, uh, from our general fund and, and that's the drawback, you would have to use general fund dollars.
Okay, um, Mary had a question, then I had to come.
From the ground lease, if we are successful with our RFP and getting the ground lease and when we did the feasibility study, we did it that. You know, it was po- a possibility that we could get a million a year on the ground lease.
That's correct.
When do you think that would kick in and could we be contributing that to the COP?
You can, because you would be able to contribute towards the COP because it is general fund dollars, it would be unrestricted dollars, uh, what we would receive, um. The timing, it really would depend on how aggressive the developer is and what type of loans they're, they're able to get. One of the things I'm exploring is to see if there's a way for us to use somehow our. Ratings to maybe get loans and, and, and help in that matter, um, but that gets kind of sticky, so, uh, you know, it's not necessarily something you want to do. But it would expedite, you know, a developer to move forward more quickly, right now, the, the difficulty is, you know. Our rates are much better than what a developer would be able to get in the market, um, and so.
Conceivably, we could have down the road and paying off the COP, we could start getting the ground lease payment that could be contributing towards paying off the COP.
I, I'm thinking, probably, yes, uh, maybe around twenty twenty eight, you'd already start having some, some revenues start kicking in, and again, please, this, this is a very. It, don't quote me on that at all, that's, that's a.
Hawthorne funds.
Scenario.
Hawthorne gets used by the city as an early childhood development center, the, those incomes could also be allocated to pay off the COP?
Well, one of the things, um, i- i- if they, if the city uses that, I'm assuming that they would incorporate that payment into our JPA payments. Or they would expect, make, I, I think there would be an expectation that, um, it would be part of our JPA, uh, payment, you know, scenarios, but just, you know. One thing to under, to, to note though, uh, is, you know, there are a lot of competing things that, that will affect the general fund. In the near future, you know, in regards to technology, for instance, you know, we talked a little bit about technology refreshes. Um, OPEB obligations that still exist, some deficit spending that we'll have to correct in the future. So, um, there are some competing priorities, um, that, that million dollars that potentially could be generated through developer, uh, through, through the DO lease. Um, would, is that money essentially could be used for technology, could be used for OPEB, it could be used towards, you know, uh, deficit spending. Um, so there's a lot of com- com- uh, uh, competing factors, right, and we're a little, getting a little ahead of ourselves there, but there are some competing factors there that, that you'll see. But definitely, it could be used for this as well.
Something, something, something I want to understand a little better in this scenario. Um, both of you guys, is the timeline. Um, considering, let's say we remove the parking out of building C. When would building C projected be completed? Because that will kind of tell us when we would need funds and how close that brings us to either the state mitigation funds that you were talking about. Or, um, COP or whatever, or the DO development, um. Right now, it's kind of a little ethereal and, and we could say, you know, if we start in a year, we finish two years, that's three years, so now we're looking at twenty twenty six. The bridge and then, you know, we figure it out, I don't, I don't really have a grasp on that, but it will matter at what point cash does become an issue. So.
Yes, so I, I think cash will become an issue probably in about two or three years, um, because i- i- if we do, if we move forward with everything, but I, I. Again, we, we'd have to really develop a good cash flow, uh, to just with this assumption in mind, you know, um. Then that's what you're seeing, for instance, those first three years not have a payment and then, you know, the payments start happening after, because I feel like. You know, in the first couple of years, you're going to have some, some cash flow, uh, issues there, um. Uh, but we, we'd have to develop a, a, a more solid cash flow projection, um, and that incorporates the scenario of just doing building C. And the other scenario of doing everything, and I think that will. And I think that will better answer your question, uh, but I I definitely, that that's that's something we'll have to prioritize in 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 regards to. Planning this out to uh entering into the cops, none, you know, until we actually need the cash. We would, we would definitely do that, we wouldn't wanna, you know, enter into it before we need the cash. Eh, but in regards to the timeline being affected, I know that with um just redesigning and removing the parking lot, I think that, you know, in our architects here. And maybe they could, you know, elaborate a little more, or I mean, I think it's there as well, and you know, it it will take more time for us to be able to. Run that through D S A and and there's different methods there, but it it will, you know, impact that timeline, which may push back the need for cash. Because if we have to start later, then the the cash would be needed later, I I mean, I don't know if you could talk a little bit about timeline?
That that's that's good enough, Raphael, Mary had one.
The other point I was gonna make is that by. If we are able to move the district office to the high school and not utilize Hawthorne, we're gonna save. I I'd like to understand what our savings would be operationally by not using Hawthorne until we figure out what we're doing with Hawthorne, so. If we don't have to be operating Hawthorne, then you don't have utilities and you don't have security being run there, you're because we're not gonna have programming. If someone else wants to come in, meaning the city are, you know, similar to the ground lease and they wanna take that on and they wanna pay for that. And they take on all those operational costs, that's why I think we should leave that out of the J P A. Because that then creates an opportunity for us to create a deal there where we don't have expenses. Or we can even get paid for the use of that that space and that will help us fund this. And then if we want to then expand the programming, it's there, we still own it, but for now, we can make do with the space that we have. And I don't mean make do like, oh, it's crumbling, I think we should to, we should make a goal of trying to finish the high school. And doing it as efficiently as we can, so that we can, you know, and utilizing the C O P. And then finding ways where we can eliminate our, reduce our operational expenses and then get the ground lease. Figure out what kind of deal we can make with Hawthorne, keep Hawthorne separate from the J P A that we're doing right now, because that creates an opportunity for us to partner. In a different way and not having our programming there, we don't need it there right now, then that means that space wide open for a lot of opportunity for us to. To create something with it and I I think that's a smarter way for us to go, because I, we really have to determine our priority and our priority to me. It's finishing that high school and finishing it in a way that it feels finished.
Yeah, and with and meeting the community.
Well, with me to not finish the field, it's a dozen.
I I don't think it's so close with anybody, it's.
If we're in striking range with the C O P, I think we should be doing it, because we we know we're gonna get. And we believe we can get income from the ground lease, we have options to get income from these other areas. Down the road in terms of cash flow and we are in striking range, but we have to make some decisions about how do we cut those costs and that's why I think. Moving the district office over there, I, when I say the district office, I mean what's happening on this property. And as well being really smart about how we, how we utilize that space, um, and how we utilize the pen point port, so if that means. No parking under building C, I think we can survive with our parking in A and finding parking in other ways, it's gonna be a lot less expensive and less time. Than building an underground parking structure.
Or borrowing more money.
Yeah.
Um, the last thing I was gonna say is perhaps this uh could be something we can task the facility committee, I'm sorry, the finance committee to look into. Um, that's their job, that's what they're formed for. Right, the finance, what and and what Raphael presented to us, have him present to them and let them all pine, maybe they're thinking of something that we haven't. And they can bring it back to us and and with a recommendation.
He did, you did share that last time, yeah.
I I've already started some of those, that's a, yeah, I know, no, I I did start. Uh, some of those discussions already with with the finance committee and they they've seen some of these, so some information, just because we're kind of. Looking for some ideas to bring to the to the board, uh, but definitely we'll have more in-depth discussions. Uh, but uh, we we could definitely look at the space thing, uh, but let us, if you give us some time to just kind of see, you know. What that looks like at the high school and and see the cost differences uh there and we'll bring something back.
Yeah, all right, um, anything else, colleagues, um, Will, was there anything else on the presentation?
Uh, no, except the these beautiful new theater seats that I was just gonna show off, which is ready to look at.
Thank you. Is this gonna be posted on K B A, what's gonna happen with that in case anybody asks?
I don't know how we're gonna post it after.
Uh, it's being recorded and then I will send it to K B A and they will just upload it.
Thank you.
As soon as possible.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so if there are no other questions, thank you colleagues, a very lively, informative discussion. Um, I will adjourn the meeting.
Okay, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.